We're good? All right. Is this the entire team? We're missing some players? Are they on their way? We want them to be here. We don't want them to miss anything. Is this one of your players? Wow.
That explains it.
Okay. We're gonna get to convene a meeting at this time. I'd like to say welcome to everyone. It is Thursday, January 16th, 6:30 PM. In the new year of 2020. It's our first meeting of the new year. I can't believe how quickly 2019 has gone by. I hope 2020 doesn't go by as quickly. But would everyone please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Diane, please let the record show that all members of council are here even though the three weary travelers who had a long day traveling were glad they all made it back in time.
It was close.
I'm sure we'll hear some reports from them. As I said, we started out, I was asking where the rest of the team was. Their first item of business this evening is to do something that we had the pleasure of doing about a year ago. And that is to recognize the 2019 Pop Warner National Football Team Champions. I guess this is probably what you would become, refer to as something that's becoming a dynasty, all right?
Yeah, there you go.
And I'm sure it's even more challenging for you because you have young people who come in and they move up in age or they move to a different, you know, and you gotta kind of backfill. So it's even more of a challenge, I think, for the coaching staff. I'd like to share just a little bit of the history of their march to the championship this year with everyone. They went undefeated throughout the regular season. So that's, is that two years in a row you were undefeated?
Last year was on point, yes.
You lost a game last year? Oh, wow.
In the regular season.
Well, you fixed that this year. You went undefeated. Gee, didn't the national championship, LSU, didn't they go undefeated too?
Yes, sir.
So you, yeah, you're white. You got some LSU fans here? Okay. They went undefeated during the regular season and they went undefeated at the Pop Warner National Championships at the ESPN Worldwide of Sports this past December. I'd like to just share with you what their record was during this tournament, which they won. They defeated, first they had to defeat the Oakland, the Oak Cliff Titans and they won that game 26 to 7. Then they played the Penn Hill Trojans and they won that game 12 to 6. So it sounds like as they went along, the competition got a little tougher and tougher, right? They won the national championship game by defeating the Stratford Redskins by a score of 12 to 8 to capture their second straight Pop Warner Super Bowl trophy. Wow, that must feel, really feel great. A little bit about this game, though. Rashawn Brown Jr., he returned an interception for a touchdown and had a huge 30-yard run late in the fourth quarter. From the five-yard line, it took four plays to get in. Now, that mean you went in on the fourth, that, fourth and goal?
Fourth and goal.
Fourth and when to get a touchdown or fourth and goal?
Touchdown.
It was fourth and goal, in other words. Either you got the touchdown or you guys lost the game.
Yeah, basically it came down to that.
So the coach, you made that big decision. You made that NFL coaching...
I made that big decision to bring him in on offense.
Okay.
I heard directly behind you.
Clearly you weren't using analytics. Well, after four tries, on that fourth try, they punched in for that touchdown, which was the winning touchdown, and won the game for them. So outstanding work. Coach, I'm gonna ask you, your head coach and offensive coordinator?
Yes, sir.
Samuel Curry?
Yes, sir.
Coach, I'm gonna ask you to introduce the rest of your team, your staff members and team moms and whoever you want. Go ahead, please. Would you introduce them, please?
Come to the microphone now.
Yeah, you could do it from up there.
Right now, we also have eight-on-eight going, so some of the coaches are at the practice fields, honestly. My defense coordinator was Camario Pierce. He's not here right now. My assistant coach with Dara Allen, he's not here. My office assistant was Irvin Jenkins. He's not here right now because he also played semi-pro football.
Really?
So he had a practice tonight.
Okay.
My defense assistant coach was Shiloh America. He actually on the way, on the way, he's kinda late. Sorry about that. My special team coordinator was Brandon Gorlin. And my, I don't wanna forget no one.
Team mom.
And my defensive coordinator, I said Mario. My team mom was Marjorie Gorlin and I'm forgetting something. Oh, and my office assistant was also Adam Chars. My team consists of 31 players from Royal Palm Beach and surrounding areas.
Very good, Coach. Outstanding job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And our goal is to repeat next year.
Okay.
Repeat.
Now, I hope you can do that because, you know, the NFL, every year, they pluck off these, these up-and-coming assistant coaches, right? Coordinators and you might lose somebody, no? Maybe not to the NFL, but maybe to the college level. But anyway, no.
Patriots.
No, we are really proud of all, of your team and all of the young, fine players you have on your team. Is the team mom here? Because I just wanna give her a shout-out because in this age group, all right, I, my son played when he was about your age and I know what it's like on the sidelines in the midst of a game when you've got these young ones, you're trying to keep them focused and trying to keep them hydrated and into the game. So I know that the team mom plays a big role in that as well. Once again, thanks again and what are you guys gonna do to celebrate this year? You had a little gathering last year, right?
Last year, we had you guys blessed with the opportunity to have the banquet, Coach Center, and we had a football banquet.
Well, you know, talk to that man down at the end.
So hopefully you can do that again.
That's what I'm saying. There you go.
So we wanna have a big football banquet and once you have the Super Bowl rings and the trophies to the guys.
That is outstanding.
Hopefully we get the Coach Center again.
I'm sure, I'm sure things can be worked out.
We do. Photo op.
But once again, we thank you all so much for your, yeah. Is there some way we can do it, take a picture here?
Actually, we can do it right here.
Right here, right? Okay.
Your idea? In a position?
Uh, positions?
Yeah.
Say your position.
Defensive tackle, defensive.
Okay. Dark.
Sid. Roger.
Good.
Do you want to just be, you guys?
Yeah, we have it. Then we can find a way to ask the coach.
They win games all the time.
They changed the rules to eliminate weight. So it went to age-based, y'all better wait for this. It was a certain age-based.
You need the first four of each champion.
Keep working your time.
So no matter what, they always remember that we first gotta do it.
Do you? That your...
I will.
Well, I thought he was a year older than Christina. Okay. So.
We need winning teams in Royal Palm. We need winning teams in Royal Palm.
Great idea. Okay. Thank you, guys.
Okay, okay. I shall follow your request.
Yes, over.
Okay. Oh, you guys aren't gonna stay for the whole meeting? Yeah, the coach was telling me that this, this year, they changed the rules around and last year, it was whoever played on the team was more controlled by weight. This year, they said it was by age. There was an age cutoff.
Unlimited weight? Interesting.
So he had to go out and recruit some?
Yeah.
He had to beef up a little bit.
So that's how you get the fourth and goal?
Well, yeah. Because the other, the other teams in the league were gonna be bigger and heavier. So now, he said that, I asked him, did they change the rule to make it tougher for you guys because you were the champions? He says, well, you know how that works. So they overcame anyway, so that's good. That's goodness. Yes. All right, we're going to go to reports this evening and Selena, we'll start with you.
Why not? Okay. And then you're gonna talk about that.
You can talk about it.
You want to? It's your turn. You're gonna bring it up before you go?
I wasn't gonna bring it up, but go ahead.
All right. No, 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 you. Good evening, everyone. We, Vice Mayor Raduski and Councilman Hamer and myself went over to Tallahassee for the two days, for Palm Beach County Days. So I'll just give a brief update because I know everyone has their own take on different things that we had. But this year, we had in the budget funding for an all-access playground that we're gonna do in Commons Park. So this is something that came out of a strategic planning session last year and Councilman Valentes brought that up. So we took that over. They were very impressed by it, so thank you, staff, for all the work that you put into it. Thank you for our state senate appropriations chair is Senator Debbie Mayfield. Senator Bobby Powell co-sponsored the event, the bill. Thank you very much to Chair Resource Appropriation Representative Holly Raschkin and Representative, State Representative Matt Willhite, who sponsored it. So it went through the House already, they approved it, and we're just waiting on funding for it. So they were very impressed with the park and all the work that went into it. We also, I also wanted to thank Palm Beach County Fire Rescue because they helped us navigate some issues that we had during the event. They were very helpful with us over there. Also, our lobbyist, Ron Book, Rana Brown, and staff did a great job. And then Vice Mayor and I also met with Senator Lauren Book, who's at a plantation, but she focuses on children, families, and elder affairs. So we made an appointment to get together to talk and just see how we can either work together on some stuff or if she has some recommendations on things that we can do to help our residents with that. Since it was in Tallahassee, I brought back some paraphernalia for Councilman Valentes and our village engineer, so I'll make sure I have that up there for you. Our village manager, I had your credit card information. I tried to bring you back some Florida State paraphernalia, but the other two wouldn't let me. So you can thank them for it, yes.
There's your story there.
Right. I also attended a meeting. We had the Palm Beach County Census. So I have little flyers for you guys to go through and it's just all the information on there. We did talk about it. There isn't any funding really to staff-wise and working on it and promote it, so they're looking grassroots way to make sure that we all get out there and that's one of the things that they had. Monday, the 20th, is Martin Luther King Day, so CAFSI is doing their annual event over at the Cultural Center. That's 8:45, they have breakfast, and then the event starts at 10:00. And then on the 31st, we have our gourmet truck and concert. There's a Fleetwood Mac tribute band over at Commons Park as well. And that completes my report.
Thank you.
Just like to thank, I think it was last week, Senator Powell and Representative Willhite had a town hall meeting over at the Cultural Center where they advised us a lot of what legislation was being proposed this session and I enjoy the fact that they come and give us that information and I hope they continue doing it. And wanted to also thank Rabbi Strax, who had us all over to the Shabbat here in Royal Palm Beach for Hanukkah. It was a nice celebration and I appreciate the invitation every year. And that's it?
Good. Yeah, check.
So just picking up on what Councilwoman Samios just was talking about a little bit, the trip to Tallahassee, Palm Beach County Days. There were over 200 elected officials from the county and staff there. And interestingly enough, there were, more than 80 of them were from the League of Cities, so we had that overlap. I didn't fully understand the significance of that until I got my marching orders when I got up there and being president of the League of Cities, I wasn't able to join our Vice Mayor and Councilwoman Samios on their, their mission with regard to the all-access playground. But I'm sure it went well and so we kinda went in different directions. But I had a chance to actually participate in a lot of the county's presentations to some of the senior members of the administration, the DeSantis administration. In fact, at one point, we thought we were gonna be meeting with the governor. We wound up meeting with his chief of staff. It was, it was interesting, but it wasn't the governor. We did meet with the lieutenant governor, we met with the CFO, a number of other key individuals, and then the president of the senate. And so I was brought along with the opportunity on occasion to represent not only the League of Cities, but one of our issues that continues to be an issue and that is home rule. And so if, if I didn't get the opportunity during the major discussions, I took the opportunity on my way out the door and I talked to the lieutenant governor and several others about home rule. Their immediate response was they were, they were very knowledgeable of the issues and the way we see it and the struggle. They were very supportive of allowing us to make those decisions and we even heard that from the governor when he spoke to the Florida League of Cities Annual Conference. And so I used that and actually it turns out the chief of staff remembered that and to say, the governor is pointing us in the right direction. We'll help you as much as we can with the legislators and please continue to think the way he's thinking so that we, we can maintain our, our authority for local decision-making. We had representatives from a variety of different functional areas at each one of these meetings with these senior individuals, such as we had the fire and rescue chief from Palm Beach County and he was talking about cancer prevention issues and money that they're looking for, for what they call buffer suits. When a suit gets contaminated, they want to be able to get rid of the suit totally because they are concerned about not being able to decontaminate it. And another issue that came up was Palm Beach State College and of course, President Dr. Ava Parker was there and she does her usual outstanding job. One of the things in particular she was talking about was, of course, appropriations funding, but it, of particular interest to us was for Loxahatchee Campus.
Right.
For their dental and medical services, technology buildings that they, they need $27 million for that. So that's, that's a big deal. It's a big ask, but she was there at the right place at the right time. At one of the meetings, I think it was with the lieutenant governor, we even had a senior executive, and I don't remember his position, from Scripps, who talked about internships and the connection not only with FAU, but also with the high schools and that type of thing. And he made the point, he said that, and he plans for Scripps to be in Palm Beach County in perpetuity, was the words that he used.
He actually used that word?
He actually used that phrase. I thought that was...
Story behind that word?
Yeah, there means something to some of us. Yeah, exactly. Most of the issues were carryover issues, but one of the things that makes these issues of water, affordable housing, the environment, the Everglades, different, I think, this year from previous years is that we have a governor who seems to be oriented in that direction.
Direction.
And, and so I, I think there's a good reason to be somewhat optimistic. I mean, we still have the, the House and the senate to deal with and, but we've seen him actually veto various things that didn't align with, with his thinking. So I think we have good reason to be optimistic. One other thing I wanted to talk about is an experience that I actually had a couple of times because these young folks, there were five students from Dreyfus School of the Arts, who accompanied us to most of these meetings. And you, I think you all heard them at the overview session, talk about their, their appreciation for the mental health counseling kinds of increases that we've seen in our school as a result of funding and initiative taken in response to Parkland last year. And what they were asking for was both a sustainable line, that is, a continuing revenue line and not just drop it now that some of the edge has been taken off of it, continue to fund, but fund it also at a higher level. So this one young lady talked about her own personal experience. She comes from a family who's economically strapped and is a free and reduced lunch student. And it took her a month to get an appointment with the one counselor that they had at Dreyfus. Counselor's only part-time and so when she did get her 10 minutes with the counselor, the best he could do is first of all, say, you know, I think you could actually use some additional counseling. And he said, but my time being so limited, 1,400 students in the school, part-time counselor, yeah, he said, I will give you a referral, which would work fine if there was enough money in the family. And, and so that was the compelling story that was put out there and, and it was very effective and she talked about it several times. And these kids were amazing, articulate, smart, pointed. They did a great job of presentation. So I think all in all, it was, it was a good experience. I think it was good open dialogue. It's early and so this is where I'm gonna remind everybody that the Monday Morning Corlens, that Florida League of Cities does, updates everybody and also puts out calls, calls to action, very specifically identifying whatever bill we either wanna support or oppose, giving you talking points and also the people to talk to and the contact information. So turns out, now that I've encouraged you to listen in on Monday, the next one's gonna be on Tuesday.
On holiday.
Because it's a holiday. But nine o'clock and I have the contact information if anybody needs it. So at that, I conclude my...
That's great. Good evening. I think all the facts were talked about as far as who saw what and who we met with, but I just wanna reiterate the importance of us going up and really talking to our legislators in their home work space and the relationships that they build. So one of the things that was really important for me to hear was Representative Reshin, Reshine, sorry, say that she had a really good relationship with our representative, Willhite. And that made a difference because she was then more receptive to us coming there. And so as we go up, we're meeting more of these representatives who aren't in our district and, and making those relationships stronger, especially as they advance and change and move into more senior positions, especially appropriation. So that was really important that we, that we went there. And then we do have one more meeting I'm gonna talk about. And this is a notice of public input for Crestwood North Park and it's taking place on Tuesday, January 21st, at 6:30 at the Recreation Center. And it's to conduct a public meeting to discuss capital improvements for the Crestwood North Park.
Good.
Yeah.
Good.
And so I'll just say this, too. I saw it on Twitter. So I know that we don't have a lot of Twitter followers, but I saw it on Twitter, so I shared it and we will try to, you know, increase our Twitter followings.
Got one heart.
Yeah.
It was on Facebook, too.
Get over Facebook. That's it. Thank you, Fred.
We do have one more meeting before the, the next council meeting. That is February 13th. We will have a, let's see, I'll get this right, conceptual design, conceptual design, Village Hall conceptual design, public input meeting.
Good.
So we're going down, we've got the architect under contract. Staff has met with them this, this past week and they are preparing some drawings for that meeting. It'll start at 6:30 at the Cultural Center. It'll be a format where there'll be boards and information out. People will be given an opportunity to look at, look at those and then the, the architect will give a presentation probably around seven o'clock, won't be very long, 15, 20 minutes. And then we'll get, get input from the, from the public. So it'll be presenting what, what our thoughts are and why we're going down this path.
This meeting, I guess, is similar to the one we had, when we had the planning process to get input for remodeling the Cultural Center.
That's correct.
Which turned out to be very, very fruitful. We got a lot of good feedback that we were able to incorporate, so.
I mean, and this will be another very, very significant public infrastructure. We'll be here for the next 50 years at least and, and should be a project that we're all proud of. That is all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Mary, thanks for bringing with us tonight. You have anything?
No.
No? Okay. Okay. All right, then, before we close out reports, I'm gonna ask Lou, can you come up, please, and talk to us about the golf tournament?
You knew I was gonna call you.
Good evening. Okay, the mayor's golf tournament. This is the first time, obviously, that we're having it at this time of the year where it'll be a little cooler. It'll be its own independent event. And the proceeds, again, will, will come back to the village to help offset the expense of the $10,000, $1,000 scholarships that you give out every year. Right now, we have 14 or 15 foursomes, but that's not unusual because usually the last week they, they come in, yeah. And we're gonna have some raffles and there'll be some competition out there, hole-in-one and another, you know, and par threes. We'll have some beverages for the golfers. And it won't be just water. But, you know, again, it's February 1st, shotgun, start at eight o'clock. So we're looking for more foursomes. The more we get, the more money we can make.
At the Village Golf Club?
Village Golf Club, yeah. And as you know, every year, we switch it between the Village and Madison Green. Yeah.
So we need to get out and do some, hit some balls between now and February 1st.
Yep. Our driving range is open till nine o'clock.
Every night, okay.
And it's lit.
He set that up.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? Any questions from members?
Could I mention one thing? So Lou just mentioned the scholarships and just as a reminder, the completed applications for the Village scholarships must be turned in and postmarked no later than Friday, February the 14th.
Hey, that's a good segue there, all right.
All right? So just as a reminder to everybody.
And we did send flyers to the principal at the high school figuring it's gonna benefit their students, so hopefully we can get some teams out of there, too. Okay?
Okay. Thanks, Lou, appreciate it. And that concludes our reports this evening. At this time, if there's anyone who wants to provide a petition for the council, now would be the time. Seeing none, note, we'll close the floor for petitions. I do not have any comment cards for statements from the public on non-agenda items or for consent agenda items, but if there's anyone here who would like to comment on a non-agenda item or a consent agenda item, now would be the time. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the floor to public comments from non-agenda items or consent agenda items. And with that, can you give us the consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Number one, approval of the minutes of the council regular meeting of December 19th, 2019. Two, approval and authorization in accordance with established policy to make a budget amendment for Fund 302 in the fiscal year 2019-2020 budget. Said amendment to transfer a total of $150,000 from undesignated fund balance 3990100 to Village Hall Construction Project EN 2001. Three, approval and authorization for the village manager to execute consultant services authorization number two with REG Architects Incorporated for the design of public meeting space within the proposed Village Hall building. The cost for said services shall not exceed $56,000. Four, approval of an application for a special events permit by the CrossFit Liger to conduct their fitness competition at 583 105th Avenue, Unit 7, on Sunday, February 9th, 2020, from 7:00 AM until 5:00 PM. Five, approval and authorization to purchase 800 Classic Series chairs and chair carts for the Cultural Center from Mighty Light Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $100,000 by piggybacking Miami-Dade Term Contract RTQ 00439, effective through February 28th, 2020.
Okay. There are no comments from members on council regarding the consent agenda. I'll look for a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Remember, motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? If you have no opposed, Diane, please let the record show that the consent agenda was accepted 5-0. All right, first item on the regular agenda, agenda item R1, is a public hearing for first reading and approval ordinance number 998, amending Chapter 16, Business Tax and Registration of the Business Regi- of the Business Regulations at Article 1, in general, in general, at Section 16-12, Special Events Permits, Seasonal Vendor Permits, to modify the process for special event permits and seasonal vendor permits. Bradford, you're on. Happy New Year, Bradford. How you doing?
Happy New Year. Good to see you, everyone. Mitty will be making the presentations on these ordinance proposals.
Sure thing. And if I may, you essentially read it for me, but I'll read it by title, just so the full title is on the record. As you said, this is ordinance 998, an ordinance of the Village Council of the Village of Royal Palm Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 16, Business Tax and Registration, Other Business Regulations of the Code of Ordinances of the Village of Royal Palm Beach at Article 1, in general, at Section 16-12, Special Event Permits, Seasonal Vending, Seasonal Vendor's Permits, in order to modify the process for Special Event Permits and Seasonal Vendor Permits, providing that each and every other section and subsection of Chapter 16, Business Tax and Registration, Other Business Regulations shall remain in full force and effect as previously adopted, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and for other purposes. Very briefly, since this is first reading, I will hit the high points and then answer, certainly do my best to answer any questions you have. This essentially makes two substantive edits. It changes the timeframe for which the special event permits are submitted. It changes it back from 30 days to 45 days, just to ensure appropriate time for processing those applications. The major change, more major change, is the change to seasonal vendor permits to streamline that process and to have those handled more like minor site plan modifications through the Planning and Zoning Department, rather than have those go all the way through your village council. It imposes, it basically mimics the same criteria that you, as council, are currently evaluating them, just gives that authority to the Planning and Zoning Director or his designee to approve those administratively, to essentially eliminate the burden of having those go all the way through the process. Those are things like Christmas tree sales, the smaller scale...
Things that occur every year.
Correct. Things that are repetitive, as you say.
Sure. Okay. That makes sense. That's good streamlining of government, I think.
And I'll answer any questions. Those are the big edits. I'll answer any questions you have. Yes, sir.
All right. Well, before we take questions from council, I do not have any public comment cards on Agenda Item R1, but if anyone would like to comment on this agenda item, now would be the time. Okay, seeing none. I will close public comment for Agenda Item R1. And I think, Richard, Selena, I'm sorry.
Thanks. No, it's okay. My concern reading through this was that does the, is 45 days too far out, or can we or staff then go through to make sure if there's an issue and it's not the 45 days, will the event, the permit still get in on time? And what made me think about it is when we had the event over, the permit that came in for one of our schools, and they were waiting for the documentation from a vet because they were going to do a petting zoo. So that was holding up the process, and I wouldn't want something if they're waiting on it or other things like that to stop it from going through this process if they're not going to be there the 45 days. So I wouldn't want them not to have the event because of that.
So, and I'll jump in if you interrupt me if you have anything else, Bradford. But this essentially, if you recall, the last timeframe was a 60-day period that was shortened to sort of help that processing. We're finding that that might not be enough time. So we're just trying to add a few more days to make sure that, given the timing of meetings and the timing of events, that there's enough time to get them on the next quickest agenda. So I think that that should actually facilitate and help that process rather than hinder it. They can submit anytime. It's just going to be at least 45 days.
And that's what I'm, and that was my, that was my concern, is I'm wondering, though, if sometimes that that's not always going to work, will they go through and just say it's contingent on you getting this final paperwork or you getting this? Would it stop, so it doesn't stop it from coming to us because they need that extra time?
The 45 days allows for it to go through our process and come before council. The 30 days worked when we were doing two council meetings a month. We bend over backwards to try to help these applicants out. We understand that they need to get approval in order to do advertising, but we, I can't, I can't think of a time where we didn't try to accommodate.
And it is, it is standard operating procedure for us to, or I should say, for the Planning and Zoning Director, because he's the one with the authority, to certify applications. It doesn't always like, we don't like necessarily doing it, but in those circumstances, and then I think it was a pet license, a pet, some kind of license that was required. And the Planning and Zoning Director did make the decision to certify it at TSR, pass it on the council with the condition that that document get to us before it got put on council. And if they didn't, it would not have been on the council agenda. We wouldn't have put the council in a position of whether to vote on it or not without that document. So we routinely look at that kind of condition, and Bradford makes the decision whether to certify it with that condition or not at those times, but it's pretty routine to do that.
You good? You don't see any other lights, so there are no further comments. I'll look for a motion.
I make a motion to approve Regular Agenda Item Number 1.
Second.
Remember, motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that Agenda Item R1 was approved 5-0 for the first reading. Agenda Item R2 is also a public hearing for the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 999, amending Chapter 22, subdivision of land to modify the requirements for park and recreation land dedication or payment of fees in lieu of therefore, thereof. You're still on, Bradford. Oh, hey. Boy, you really... Okay.
I'll go ahead and read this one by title again as the last. This is ordinance 999, as you said, an ordinance of the Village Council of the Village of Royal Palm Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 22, subdivision of land at Article 3, Development Design Standards at Section 22-55, recreation requirements for residential developments in order to modify the requirements for park and recreation land dedication or payment of fees in lieu thereof, providing that each and every other section and subsection of Chapter 22, subdivision of land, shall remain in full force and effect as previously adopted, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and for other purposes. As this is second reading, I'll answer any questions you have. I understand you had a robust discussion at the last meeting, so if you have any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them.
Before we take any questions, I'd like to give the public a chance to comment. I have no comment cards from the public on Agenda Item R2, but if anyone would like to comment, now would be the time. Seeing none. Okay, we're closing public comment to Agenda Item R2. And I don't know, are there any other further questions for members on council? We did have some dialogue on this. We're good? If we are, then I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve Regular Agenda Item Number 2.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that Agenda Item R2 was approved for second reading. 5-0. Agenda Item R3 is a public hearing for a second reading and adoption of ordinance number 1000, amending Chapter 26, zoning, to modify requirements for park and recreation land dedication or payment of fees in lieu of... So this is the same thing but for a different part in the ordinance.
That's correct, sir. This, as you say, is ordinance 1,000. It's an ordinance of the Village Council of the Village of Royal Palm Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 26, zoning, to provide for an amendment to the previously adopted zoning code, specifically amending Article 4, supplemental regulations at Section 26-75.4, recreation requirements for residential developments, in order to modify the requirements for park and recreation land dedication or payment of fees in lieu thereof, providing that each and every other section and subsection of 26, zoning, shall remain in full force and effect as previously adopted, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and for other purposes. And as you say, this is the exact same language as the previous ordinance, just in a different section of the code.
Okay. At this time, I have no public comment cards from members of the public on Agenda Item R3. But if anyone from the public would like to comment, now would be the time. Seeing none, we're closing public comment on Agenda R3. There are no comments from members on council. I'll look for a motion.
Move to approve Regular Agenda Item Number 3.
Second.
Remember, motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that Agenda Item R3 was approved 5-0 for the second reading. That concludes our business this evening. We have no further items on the agenda. And I don't know who took the over/under, but thank you all. Welcome to the new year, and I hope to see some of you guys out on the golf course beginning of February.